Council or walk session, if we will. We'll have Councilman John Reed to do the pledge and the prayer of the pledge.
Lord, thank you for all the many blessings that you've given us. Thank you for our wonderful city and thank you for our wonderful citizens. Please help us to make the right decisions for everyone in the city and to make it a better place than we can and found it. And as always, please look over those who look over us. Your name and prayer.
Amen.
Praise the Jesus. The life of the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with infinite justice for all.
We're going to go ahead and dive into the program. I do want to thank everyone for coming out this morning, but this afternoon. I love that. And we definitely excited about this opportunity, just kind of giving everyone a backdrop of what we have going on is that our community has been extremely blessed to have a lot of economic development and a lot of good people working to move our community forward. Some key projects that we've had is the Blue Mile Project as well as the Creek on the Blue Mile Project. And a part of the conversation that's been associated with the Blue Mile Project has been associated with the conversation of affordable housing here within the city of Statesboro. A couple of weeks back, that a councilman bring about idea of ours polite within the community. And I kind of figured if we're going to begin to address that, I think that we should do it in a comprehensive fashion and have the means to put together a plan that's going to really work for the entire community. And as fate would have it, Dr. Jermaine Durham and I was able to have a conversation in around a new position that he's obtained with the University of Georgia. And it's with the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, and this is exactly what they do. One thing that's extremely exciting is that this program's been around for 15 years. And the correct me if I'm wrong, where 70-plus communities have been a part of this program. And 76, okay, and more than $360 million have gone to these communities via this program in and around community housing. So I think after that, I thought this would be a great opportunity for the city of Statesboro. You know, we've been real lucky over the past few years, and we want to keep riding that wave. So we invited him down to give a little backdrop about what's going on in the community, in the community that's associated in the world of affordable housing. So Dr. Durham, I want to turn it over to you and let allow you to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what you do and about this great program.
Great, great, great. Thank you so much for having me here today. Once again, my name is Jermaine Durham. I'm a senior professor, housing community development at the University of Georgia. And I'm a student, I'm a junior student. I lived in Statesboro from 2001 through 2010 when I moved out to Savannah, Savannah made my way back up to Southern Carolina where I finished up my PhD a couple of weeks ago. And so, but I'm back here, it's really, it's really good to be back in Statesboro. Trying to get adjusted to the heat once again, but it's really good to be back and especially in this capacity. When I was living here, I did a number of different jobs here. Most of it was sitting around my teaching at the alternative young boys' school here for about a year before I started working in Savannah. So I'm really, really familiar with Statesboro, really excited that the leadership here interested in the GIC program. And so what I'm going to, what I'm here today is to kind of spread information. I've done this at a couple of other city council meetings, I've been with several county commissioners about, just spreading the word about Georgia's initiative, community housing. How you can get involved, how your community can apply, and kind of what we are looking for on our end when we are accepting communities into the program. And with that, I will go ahead and get started. As Mayor McCullough mentioned, the GIC program was started back in 2005. So we have been around quite a while, and they have made a number of different positive impacts to communities all around the state of Georgia. But the essential, essentially what GIC is doing is providing a space for communities to discuss housing and to develop housing-related initiatives that address myriad problems that communities may be facing. From my work with GIC, from research, and just from being, I currently live in Hartwell, Georgia, rural areas, my hometown. And it's like many others, smaller counties in the state of Georgia, they're dealing with not only with housing affordability, but really in many communities' pockets of light, and many communities are in dire need of redevelopment. And what GIC provides is this space, is technical assistance for communities to put together housing initiatives. And hopefully, the goal is actually helping make these housing initiatives. So help communities improve their quality of life and economic productivity, development, globally-based housing, and revitalization strategy. And so, GIC is not just, it's headed up by the University of Georgia. We are, we handle a lot of the planning for the program, but it's something that is supported very intimately by several other institutions, Georgia Municipal Association, the Department of Community Affairs, Georgia Power, as well as the Public Service and Outreach at University of Georgia, and my department, Financial Planning, Housing, and Consumer Economics. So we are all pretty much in this together, you know, I think University of Georgia is the base of it, but behind the scenes, these institutions play a very intricate role in the success of the GIC program. Also, we have some of the in-kind partners, UGA-Archway Partnership, the Carver Institute of Government, as well as the UGA Extension, which is also the department that I work in, I'm also an extension specialist in the Department of Extension there at University of Georgia as well. But they also provide significant resources to help, to help the GIC program, and more importantly, help the communities that are a part of the GIC program to be successful. So when communities are getting involved in the GIC program, one of the first things that they're going to do is kind of what I think is some of the, what's taking place here. First is kind of thinking about who can serve on a housing team that is going to be dedicated to putting together a plan and helping to get this plan implemented. They're going to develop new ideas about meeting local housing needs and enhancing community development. Learn about approaches and resources to improving housing stock, produce community housing plans, and implement these plans. And I'll talk a little bit about how we get that accomplished in the GIC program. So the initiative itself is a three-year program. We just recently opened up the applications for GIC a couple of weeks ago. So you are able, and communities that are in state now are able to go ahead and fill out those applications and apply. But it's a three-year program. It includes two retreats that we have each year. One retreat is in the fall and another one is in the spring. Our spring, excuse me, our fall retreat, our spring retreat this year was in Valdosta, and our fall retreat is going to be in Douglasville, Georgia. Usually retreats are in different places around the state to help to kind of accommodate when communities are in here when it comes to travel and so on and so forth. So at the retreats, we have facilitated work sessions. Each of the GIC teams or GIC communities are partnered with a facilitator, and with the partners that we have are really influential in providing those facilitators. So we have facilitators, for example, with UGA, but also DCA provides facilitators. And what they do is work one-on-one with these communities in helping them to develop their plans, helping them to understand the resources that they have, and kind of walk them through the process of starting, understanding what the housing issues are, and moving forward with actually developing some plans of action to address those issues. We also have informative workshops that are provided by experts at these institutions. The whole city, the whole cities coordinate a housing tour. So at our retreats, for example, in Valdosta, we, they have been doing some really, really innovative work with redevelopment and housing revitalization with a program they've partnered with Home Depot, and they kind of leverage CEBG bonds to address some of the blighted issues in their community. But when we were there, we went on a bus tour of the community so we could get an opportunity to kind of see what are those issues and how they are, the impact that their initiative has had on addressing issues of blight. So this is something that takes place at each tour, excuse me, at each retreat. We have a bus tour of everyone that's there at the retreat to get an opportunity to kind of look at some of the housing in certain areas. And also reports from communities. Each community that's a part of GIC program, when we have our retreats, they are required to do a report on what is taking place. As I do the evaluations from at the end of retreats, one of the most, the biggest benefits that communities say that they get from being in the program and going to the retreats is actually hearing back from other communities. In many cases, these communities are dealing with some of the same exact issues. And it's one thing to get on the website to kind of read about what's taking place, it's another thing to actually sit down and be able to have a conversation about some of the nuanced issues that communities are facing, how they overcame some of these, some of these issues. And also, it's a great opportunity to network and collaborate with other communities around the state. We usually have about 15 communities in the program at one time, and that goes from, in the way that they are tiered, we have a freshman, sophomore, and junior communities. Those are the three years that communities are in the program. After that, you have, they become alumni communities. And we'll talk a little bit later about the benefits that communities get from, the incentive that they get from the Department of Community Affairs, and why such a GIC program has formed so much funding into these particular areas. I'll talk a little bit about that later, but it's a great opportunity to network and collaborate with other communities around the state. The retreats, so like, as I mentioned before, they're held twice a year. And all, as I mentioned, all 15 of the communities that are there are participating, as well as the alumni communities. And we get representatives from, I think right now, we have, maybe 50, some are, a large population of alumni communities of those went all the way through the program. But we do get representatives that come and they do presentations about where they are in their planning, and what they have been asked to do to address the issues that they set out to address. The retreats are held in different locations, as I mentioned, the next one will be in Douglasville, Georgia. And communities attend for two or three days. The spring retreat is a four-day retreat, but as a community, you will come only two to three days at that retreat. And the fall retreat is actually a three-day event, and most communities are staying one and a half to two days at that event. And there's no registration fees, and that's another, I think, great thing about the GIC program. There's no fees associated with the, that we take as the GIC planning committee. The only fees that are required are just lodging and travel to the retreats. And other, we'll talk a little bit about some other expenses that may come up as well, but there is no registration fees to be a part of the GIC program. So the sessions that we, at the retreats, communities pretty much get bombarded with information. You work, it's an opportunity to work hand-in-hand with your facilitator, and you also get a number of different content areas. So there are discussions on everything from coenforcement, urban development, housing assessment, how to develop a land bank authority, so on and so forth. And these content sessions change throughout each retreat. So, and it's, like, for example, neighborhood revitalization was kind of one of the main topics at the last retreat. And like I said, for the city of Valdosta, they did a really good presentation, which is on the GIC website, and I'll put it up here in a minute that you can see. But it's just a really good opportunity to get some information, to see what other communities are doing, how they're handling some of these issues. We talked a little bit about the housing tour, the whole cities coordinate the housing tour. And we, as I mentioned, in Valdosta, we were able to see a very large portion of their neighborhood. And it was really, just really interesting to see some of the impacts that they've had. So the facilitated work sessions, when communities are working with facilitators, they get probably about six to, about six hours of working with facilitators. And facilitators are, as I mentioned, from the Department of Community Affairs, Carver Institute, Georgia Power, and all of them are experts on housing and community development. So issues about, you know, how do we get funding for certain things? How do we, who do we need to go to to get this land bank authority developed? The facilitators is that, are they all those people who you're going to be working with one-on-one to help you through the whole process? And not just working at the retreats, but also in the interim. So between retreats, housing teams are meeting on a monthly basis, and the facilitators are, in many cases, are attending these housing meetings as well too, to kind of answer some questions and to continue to walk you through the process of developing that housing plan. And also, I talked about, I talked a little bit before about the reports from the communities. All the communities are required to kind of report on their progress. We do pull some alumni communities in to kind of talk about some of the end results of the plan that they've had. And as I mentioned before, it's a really informative event, and it really provides a lot of in-depth information on community development and housing. So how can a community participate? One of the first things that you're going to do is assemble a community housing team. And we'll talk a little bit about what we're looking for and what are some of the traits that make a really successful housing team. Identify housing needs within the community. And this can be done a number of different ways. Some communities come in with a pretty firm understanding of what's going on. Some of them even have even had housing assessments conducted in the areas that they want to address. Some communities come in and are just at the stage of, we know where we want to address the issue, but we just don't know exactly where to kind of start or where we need to go. And so one of the, some of the earlier things that you're going to be thinking about is addressing, identifying some of those housing needs within your community. Also identify some of the funding sources. How are we going to not only be a part of, to maintain this GIC team, but what are some of the other funding sources that you have to even address some of the issues in the community? And a couple of the other things that you'll do early prior to submitting the application, we require you to send a letter of intent. If you are interested or you're going to apply, we look for communities to kind of send a letter of intent that says that, yeah, we are, you know, similar activity, we're going to be applying and dedicated to the GIC process. So who may apply? So a number of different entities can apply, incorporated municipality, county government, public housing authority. And also, we have a couple of examples of joint city as well as county that come together for a GIC team. But the lead applicant on the, on the GIC application, those who are going to sign it is going to be one of your local government entities. So this is just some of the information that we are getting, or looking for on the application, name, address, obviously, primary contact person. This is pretty much some of the general information that we're looking for. Also, your funding sources, and it's really good to think through, you know, as I mentioned, there is no application fees to be a part of the GIC program, but when it comes to actually attending the retreats, usually, most communities are setting aside anywhere between $3,000 to $5,000 throughout the entire three-year program. And this is, as I mentioned, covering just the cost of lodging, covering, we do provide food at the retreats, but dinners are on the teams themselves. And just identifying where those funding sources are going to come from. And they can come from a number of different areas. It could be money that's set aside to buy the local government. Fundraising, a number of different approaches that communities have taken. But as I mentioned, usually, it's about $3,000 to $5,000 throughout the entire time that communities are in the program. Also, what we're going to be looking for are the members on the housing team, who do you have on the housing team? And it's, you know, it's really good to have, regardless of whether you're in the GIC program or you're just doing a housing issue on your own, doing anything with government. We understand the diversity and having a wide variety of leaders in the community that are a part of this housing team. And GIC housing teams are, they vary depending on the communities. Some have like really strong representatives from local government, city, and county. Others have, in addition to local business leaders, citizens from the communities themselves that they want to address, nonprofit organizations, so on and so forth. I think it's really important to have local government on the GIC team. We do have several GIC teams who, housing teams who don't have government representation, and they are a part of the program. Oftentimes, what I've noticed is that they can struggle when it comes to getting their ideas implemented on either within a comprehensive plan or implementing in some type of planning document. So it's really, I feel like it's really important to have some government officials on board. And I think that's one of the interesting things about, just even this meeting today, is that, you know, it's kind of initiated by local government leadership. And I think that is a really good start to get, to being a successful, being successful at addressing the housing issues and having a really, really solid plan. These are just some other members who are on GIC teams and probably are really important members for you to have, or to think about having. Housing Authority Representatives from the Housing Authority, Habitat for Humanity, faith-based organizations, colleges, nonprofits. Your regional commissioners are also really important, people to have in the booth about what's taking place with the GIC, with your GIC initiative. Even the private sector, major employers are really important as well too, to give a perspective on housing from what are their needs and what they, some of the ideas that they can kind of bring to the table and address the housing. Some of the other things we're going to be looking for in the application, I mean, it's evidence of local government support and other local support. This can be anything from an attached letter, memorandum of standing, that's a sign. Also describe the primary housing issue. So it's, if you're interested in being a part of the program, and one of the things that I feel like communities will fall short on is thinking too large about housing issues or thinking too small about housing issues. Really being able to identify, you know, this is the geography that we're looking at, this neighborhood that we want to focus on. And these are the issues that we identify, right? We see that there are, and as I mentioned, you may not have a full housing assessment. That's actually one of the things that we help you with if you become, when you become a GIC community. But really having a grasp of, you know, we know that in this area, we have a concentration of blighted homes. We have issues of housing affordability, whatever the case may be, but really being able to articulate what it is that is taking place. And also, some of the housing activities that are already taking place. I was speaking with Mayor McCullough, he was speaking really highly of the Blue Mile Committee, the Blue Mile Initiative, and affordable housing being one of the focuses and the goals of that initiative. So this is really strong. This is something that we are looking at as an application that's really strong. If they already have kind of these initiatives going, already taking place, but kind of really need that space to bring everybody together to have a more concerted effort on addressing the issue. Also briefly describe the community wishes. What is it that you're trying to accomplish? And being, and this could be, you know, bulleted, you know, we want to accomplish X, Y, and Z. Or it could be somewhat general and broad, you know, we want to address some of the affordable housing issues in this particular community. But just articulating what those expectations are that you have as a GIC housing team. And also, you're going to describe the activities and efforts. And this is for communities, Statesboro is not a community that has applied before, so this actually doesn't apply. But we've had a number of different communities that have applied before in the past, didn't get into the program, and came back and applied the next year. And this will be a section that they can kind of explain to us what they've done, to kind of why they prepared to be a part of the GIC program this year. But if, but as I mentioned, we have had a number of different communities that have tried and then got, then actually conquered. Georgia is a freshman of our freshman communities. They did make it in last year, got in this year, and seem to be have a pretty strong team. This is just some of the areas that we are, so we'll talk about the responsibilities of those that are going to be on the GIC team. The first thing is just the organization. This is a three-year, at the very least, a three-year program. So when you're selecting a team, you're thinking about, you know, the dynamics of the team, you really want people that are going to be committed to this three-year phase, and really beyond the three-year phase. This three-year process is, as I mentioned, inundating you with information, helping you to find that space to have a facilitator to walk you through this process. And to also work outside, most of the vast majority of the work that's going on with GIC teams are outside of what's going on at retreats. So they're meeting on a monthly basis. So to really have a group of people who are going to be dedicated to a three to five to six-year process in many cases is really important. And also thinking about how that turnover is going to be. And some areas, we have, you know, elected officials and other people that are in different, play different roles with the, with the local government. You know, people come and go. And so you want to make sure that for those who are going to be leading the GIC team, that they are going to be there and committed through the entire process. And have an idea about how we can manage when people move away from the, from the housing team or we bring in new people into the housing team. A couple, I think, a little bit of the attendance and participation. So, you know, having your housing team, there's a requirement that housing teams attend the bi-annual, bi-annual, bi-annual retreats. And one of the questions that gives, well, you know, we have a 15-member team, we need to bring all 15 members. Typically, that's not the case. What a lot of teams will do is send a delegation if will to the GIC retreats, gather the information, and bring that back to their respective housing teams. But really making sure that the leadership of that housing team is at the retreats and maintaining that consistency in the program. And at the end, what we, what we hope to do is to have a product, and the product is a housing plan, a housing initiative, and not just something that's going to sit on a shelf. Because that does for something that is where you're going to be implementing. And in many cases, we've seen where some communities, as they work through this plan and they go through facilitation, you know, they'll think about, well, okay, we have blight in this particular, we have blight in this area. This is one of the major issues that we're going to address. You know, one way that we can do that, we know that we have homes blighted, but, you know, we have this crazy issue of trash in the community, tires in the community. You know, how do we, what can we do now to begin to get the momentum going and change in this neighborhood? And so some teams will go ahead and start implementing some of the ideas that they have right up front. Some initiatives are going to take a little bit longer, if you want, to redevelop a public housing community, for example. If you want to just build some brand-new affordable housing to address housing affordability. Those may be long-term initiatives, but they are something that you have the opportunity to really sit down and have someone kind of walk you through that process. It's really, really important. And as I mentioned at the end, that's, what we're hoping is that you, you're absolutely going to have a housing plan, but something that is going to be implemented. And so, but the lead official who will sign it is going to be someone who is affiliated with those governmental institutions, or who is the housing authority, or the city council, or this county commissioner. Those are the, those who will sign the application to, before it can be accepted. Some of the tips that we are giving to communities is coenforcement, right? Preparation is really important. So this is a great sign of getting prepared, just having, and I will be speaking at a number of different communities that are interested. Me and another partner of mine that works at, partner of Community Affairs, we were going to be touring the state of Georgia, speaking about GIC to communities that are interested in this. But this is the first thing that, the first step, and a really strong step forward, is just being prepared, getting information. And after you develop the actual housing team to meet prior to, or in the process, while you're in the process of doing the application, if you're going to go ahead and have a housing team that's together, that is meeting, that's planning on what's going to take place, I think if we're just making a strong, a strong team and a strong application. Diversity, I talked a little bit earlier about the people who would need to think about having on a team. Although we understand that you may not, you know, fill all of those areas, each one of those individuals from those institutions, but to be as diverse as possible. And to have as many different people on that team from different perspectives is really, I think... different perspectives, uh, is really, I think, creates a, a really strong team and a strong application. Uh, the team is right size, right? Um, you want to have enough team members, uh, we do have some, you know, teams that are, uh, six and seven people, and we have teams that, we have almost twenty, some odd people that are part of the, um, Athens, for example, who is a, uh, alumni community, I think Athens went back in two thousand and ten or eleven, uh, but they now, their G- team has completed all of their plans, but they continue to meet. Um, they have become kind of the housing initiative is led by Rick Parker, who was the executive director, uh, executive director for public housing there, um, and they continue to meet and have everyone from County Commissioners to Mayor of Athens, uh, I sit, uh, have, have, began to, um, sit in all those meetings, uh, but they have a really diverse group, they have people from public, uh, from the public housing, um, that's there, so it's, it's, it's really good, but that's one of the things that we look for, uh, when it comes to showing us that you have a strong team, is having a diverse team. Um, and I think that's, that's, that's right size. The project size, uh, is right, as I mentioned, and I talked earlier, I've, um, had a meeting with, uh, one County Commissioner, and one of the things that he said, well, you know, we want to look at, everything that's in our county, that may be too large, right? Uh, you want to think about a project where you can have a major impact. Um, some issues, some, uh, initiatives that are too large, um, can take, can bite off more than you, uh, than you, and what we want is to see successes, right? Uh, so really having the right size, knowing the geography, knowing what area, uh, is really important, uh, I think will make a strong application and a successful team. Um, and as I talked a little bit about earlier, I earlier considered a home and away team, so, uh, sending a delegation to the retreats, it doesn't necessarily have to be the entire team, but having some team members that are, that, that, that doesn't, we like to say that you can't send the entire, uh, team, that's fine as well, um, but, um, having different team members that are attending the retreats and bringing that information, uh, back is, is, is really good. Uh, so this is how we score, um, uh, we look at the teams, so the number and appropriate representation groups, uh, that gets ten points, uh, evidence of support, so do you have any public financial support, uh, do you have local government support, uh, what type of government support, what does this program look like? Uh, this is ten points, uh, being able to kind of identify what those housing issues are, and, you know, being able to articulate those, uh, clearly, um, is another ten points, um, and also some of the past housing activities is really important, uh, in, in, in building a, a really strong application. Um, and, uh, also just looking at some of the expectations, you know, uh, are your expectations here, you know, we want, we want to, you know, solve all the housing issues in the entire county, you know, just our one team, or, you know, well, we have identified, you know, neighborhood aid, and we, you know, looking to do a housing assessment, this is what we plan on doing, addressing the black or addressing housing affordability via, you know, these are some of the early ideas that we have, uh, so just really being, uh, articulate about what the expectations are from the team, and this is scored, uh, five, four, two, three, four, five. So this is, uh, some of the schedule of events, um, as I mentioned, the informational webinar, oh, excuse me, the application was opened up on, uh, the twenty-ninth of April, and we just, uh, if you get on the G- website, and I will have, um, that website here in the end, um, you get on the G- website, we have an informational webinar, uh, where we kind of basically go over some of the same information that I talked about today. Uh, if you will be attending the Georgia Municipal Association's Annual Convention in Savannah, uh, G- will have a booth there, I'll be there the whole time, uh, to answer any questions, uh, uh, that you may have about the application process and being a part of G-. Uh, June twenty-eighth, G- will be due, uh, and the application, uh, the final application deadline is, uh, on July twenty-sixth, so, um, still have a significant amount of time to kind of pull things together, um, if you are interested in, in being a part of, of G-. Um, after we have selected the finalists for the program, uh, another step that you take is to actually look at the site visits, uh, or to take, look at the sites, uh, the areas, the communities, and when we take, when we do the site visits, what we want, what we want to see is, you know, where are the areas, what, that you are looking to address, uh, meet some of the, the team members that are involved, and just kind of get a better sense of what's going on, uh, housing-wise in, in your neighborhood and in your location. And those are, uh, going to take place in late August. Um, we have the selection announcement, is that the Department of Community Affairs and, uh, they make that announcement there, and that is from October, between October fifteenth and seventeenth, and I think it's going to take place in the Grange, Georgia, uh, this year. Um, and, uh, we also have a pre-retreat orientation meeting, uh, that takes place in late October, and that will be with those communities that are the new cohort, twenty-twenty cohort, uh, G- communities. Uh, and then, and, uh, the actual should say February twenty-twenty, I'm sorry about that, but the first retreat will be in February twenty-twenty, and then the second will be, uh, September, uh, twenty-twenty, and that's usually the times when the, uh, retreats late February and late September. Uh, so so, to some of the success stories, um, and, and I'll talk about the incentives, so, you know, some actual applying, how is it important to be a part of the G- program? Um, one, and one of the major, um, uh, that, uh, incentives about being a part of the other program is the perks that you get from the Department of Community Affairs. Um, so since G- has been in, um, in existence, it had about three hundred and sixty-one million dollars, had went to G- communities. In two thousand and eighteen, a lot was about five point five million that went through the home investment program, uh, about fourteen million that, uh, in low-income housing tax credits, uh, about eight million in Georgia, uh, Georgia Dream Program, and another eight point four million in community development block grant. So G- communities get pri, get priority over other communities that are applying for C-B-G is one of the perks. Uh, secondly, um, as you all may know, and I'm sure you all know, C-B-G is, if you're applying for C-B-G, um, you have to apply on, uh, you apply one year, you have to skip year, but another year. Um, if you are a G- community, uh, as long as you are certified G- community, you can apply for C-B-G funding each year that they have. Um, another important thing, uh, especially for those communities that are looking to, uh, interested in developing affordable housing or redeveloping housing, um, developers get one extra point on their qualified application plans if they are affiliated with a G- community. Um, if you're familiar with the LITC, a lot of times those, uh, awards come down to a point or half a point. Uh, so those are really, really interested, uh, in the G- program and, and, and partnering with G- communities. Um, and so that, that is another one of the, the, the really big incentives about being a part of, of G-. Like even with, like I said, with the, um, the chip for, uh, for example, it's another DCA program that helps with, uh, housing rehabilitation and revitalization, uh, you get priority, uh, as being a G- G- community. And these are just some of the, the, the funds that, uh, have kind of flowed into, into these communities over the years, last year. Uh, just some of the success stories, um, and there's a number of different initiatives that communities take when they go through, they get into the G- program. Some may be just as, as in Washington, Georgia, just, uh, revitalization, like they have a community or several communities, and they have lighted homes, and they want to develop a plan, how can we, um, rebuild, uh, revitalize this area and address issues of concentrated light in, in these areas? In, uh, City of Washington, uh, leverage DCA chip funds and the construction grant, uh, with C-B-G, uh, infrastructure funds to revitalize the corridors, so, um, yeah, many communities take a, a, um, whatever the case, whatever the initiative is, um, you know, pulling different sources, putting different funds together, uh, grant dollars, partner with certain, uh, businesses, um, in the local area, for example, uh, for Brown Hospital, exactly, and, and partnered with Home Depot, uh, to address, to have a, a homeownership revitalization program that targeted, uh, lighted homes that were homeowner-occupied. Uh, so it's a lot of different nuanced approaches and planning strategies that G- communities take, and it's really in, in a part of being, uh, in the G- community, and going to the retreats, and that you can hear about all of these, and build, uh, community, uh, build relationships with these, uh, communities that, uh, are dealing with issues very similar to what we're facing here. Uh, Pembroke, for example, was a, uh, G- community, an alumni community, and they were in the program, uh, back in two thousand and thirteen, uh, and they, uh, through the G- program, were able to develop a housing plan that was adopted into the comprehensive plan, for example, so, uh, G- teams have done a lot to kind of, uh, help to address some of the issues that are required by, you know, municipalities, with regard to comprehensive planning and that type of thing. Um, and they were, uh, twenty-four percent of the housing units had at least one major structural defect, uh, incorporated finance into the city's, uh, city's comprehensive plan, urban redevelopment plan, uh, and im- implemented a work plan through, uh, Home Depot, Vision Report Repair, uh, Handicap Grant Brands, uh, DCA sponsored LITC, Chip Development, as well as they partnered with State Farm, um, and got a Labor Assistance Grant from, uh, State Farm, and other forms of primary investment. Uh, then finally, uh, Albany, um, had was dealing with, like, a lot of communities dealing with black, um, and they, um, you know, took a, took an approach to looking at code enforcement, how can we, uh, beef up code enforcement, um, and there are some really interesting things that communities are doing around the state, um, everything from a black tax, uh, to, uh, code enforcement, people actually going, knocking on doors and speaking with people and understanding what's the dynamics of this, and why is it that this household is, um, uh, the, the property is, uh, light? Uh, and that's one of the approaches that Brown Hospital took, to really understand where, you know, who are the homeowners in these areas, and how can we kind of target them, get the form of these ones, to help them to, to lead up the area. And so with that, I'll open it up for, uh, for any questions that you, that you may have. Uh, once again, I'm Jermaine Durham, and this is, uh, my contact information, I do have, uh, some cards, and this is also, and I, what I'm going to do is, I'll email this, uh, well, this, this information is actually on the G- website, and I'll still email you this particular, uh, presentation, uh, with my, all of my information, really. And so with that, I'll, I'll, you will have to entertain any questions, uh, that you may have. And thank you for having me.
Jermaine.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm Keely Fennell, I'm with Blue Mile Foundation. Welcome to Statesboro, welcome back, um, good to see you, we're so glad you're doing so well.
Thank you.
Um, my question, how many, how many communities typically apply?
So there's anything from six communities to sixteen communities, so, uh, I know that right now we have at least ten that are, that have shown interest, and, and what that means, they've reached out to me and said, hey, we're very interested in G- program, you know, speak to us. Um, so it varies from year to year, um, they, from my understanding, we never had an issue where they did have no communities to apply, so, uh, in some, uh, years, they have been relatively competitive.
So when you apply, follow with that, um, you're guaranteed three-year commitment through the program?
Yes.
So you're in for three years, and then, um, there could be another group of fifteen the following year?
No, 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 so we have fifteen in the program altogether, so we have, uh, five junior communities, five sophomore, and five, yeah, so as, so actually in the fall, we have our, um, graduation, so, so the program, the community juniors will graduate.
So G- is basically looking for five new communities, and five freshmen?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, that's what we do.
And this is a competitive process?
Yeah, so, yeah, absolutely, yes.
My name is Seven, I'm from Alabama. Are there any, like, um, population requirements or, you know, homeownership requirements, people that qualify for homeownership?
No, there are no requirements, population, however, um, some of the smaller, I don't think Statesboro would have an issue at all, uh, but some of the smaller communities, uh, although population is not a requirement, it is and can be, uh, an issue for communities to be able to, to put together a successful application. Uh, and we're actually thinking of many ways in which, um, because we get, uh, the, many of the communities that don't get into the program, or some of these really small rural towns that may have a population of five thousand, right, um, and, uh, may have a really limited capacity on the people that they can actually have involved on the G- area, uh, so, but to answer your question, no, there is no population requirement, uh, to be a part, to be a G- community.
I have a question for you, I'm looking for the pot of gold.
Okay, I, I can run into the pot a little bit.
I want to see at this program, a devil, the scenario that I'm going to describe.
Okay.
There's a community in the western part of Bullerk County, rural area, there's probably twenty mobile homes, might have three of them with power, a group cook, wouldn't they have food? Not many jobs in that park. Now, how would, is there any grant, how can these people be helped by what I've just heard you describe?
Exactly, and, and that is something that, you know, the G- program is really built on strengthening local leadership, um, so number one is even identifying that we have kind of this community that's not your traditional community that gets addressed in, in, in planning, right, when you think about, you know, if it's a smaller kind of municipality, it's communities that are right downtown and, and, but in many of the rural areas, we have pockets of these houses in, in all of the county, like, as you just mentioned. Um, so the local team, as, as well as the facilitator, as well as everybody that we have with G-, will develop this plan of how can we address that? And that may be something, um, that, uh, an initiative where you are going out to the people in the community and actually sitting down with the people and asking, talking to, to them about what it is that they are, what are some of the issues that they're dealing with, and, um, uh, it may be, uh, if, if the mobile home area is owned and privately by, uh, a private, uh, entity, uh, it may be bringing them to the table, and really understanding what are some of the major issues and how can we address it. Um, uh, anything from, as I mentioned, if you, uh, in, 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 in some areas, in some instances, developing new housing may be a way to address some of those issues, new affordable housing options, uh, that may be closer to the areas, the economic, uh, centers in, in the county or in the city. Um, so it's a, a number of different ways that those people can be helped, but it will be up to the planning that takes place while you are a part of that G- program, and whatever that plan is, what we want to, to, to make sure is that you have the resources to address. Uh, and it could be a variety, and, and, um, like I said, we have, um, a number of different people, experts, who can kind of help to walk through that, uh, but it could vary, it could be different for Bullerk County as it is for Hart County, but we have a, a very large percentage of our, um, properties are mobile homes, and we, and mobile homes can, can decline over time a lot more rapidly than, uh, than other, other, uh, structures, and if you have a concentration of them, you have this concentration of declining properties, but that is something that will, um, can be up to the team to kind of come up with innovative ways to address that issue.
Uh, one thing I noticed on, on the slides, uh, Pembroke, Georgia, um, they actually did theirs through a partnership with Georgia Southern.
Exactly, definitely, they did, so the Georgia, so that, and that was really, so the Georgia Southern students, uh, as I mentioned before, some communities that get into, there are really more communities that, that become freshman communities in G-, uh, haven't done a housing assessment, um, and that's one of the first things that you haven't done, that's like one of the first things that we, we want you to do, and, uh, will provide that support and that help. Uh, but yeah, but in the case of Pembroke, um, I think they partnered, they partnered with, um, I don't know who the professor was or the, the department, but the Georgia Southern students came by to help them with that housing assessment, and, um, you know, housing assessments, if we were doing it from a community perspective, uh, you can do it from a different scale, just look at Cincinnati, they do it now, but really detailed housing assessment is, uh, going, looking at, identifying these specific, uh, structures that are lighted, um, really looking at the details of the community, the detail of the housing that's in that area, um, so yeah, so that, that, um, but yeah, Pembroke did partner with Georgia Southern students, and they were able to do that. Uh, so in my hometown, uh, the, Hartwell's not a G- community, I'm strongly encouraging them, trying to push them to get in, but, um, but, uh, it just so happened that the Housing Community Fellowship Class at University of Georgia, it has partnered with the Archway, um, in Hartwell, and they have done the housing assessment, uh, in one of the neighborhoods there that, that has, uh, suffered from years of decline, but housing assessment can be a, a pretty, um, depending on the side of the neighborhood, can be, uh, can require some manpower, and so it's a partner with the, the institute, with, uh, Georgia Southern, and to get those students involved, and to get those students to experience it in that new community, I thought that was a really great way, a great example of, of partnership between a G- community and a local university.
Yeah, in other words, I'm, I'm a little bit jealous. Yeah, in other words, I'm, I'm a little bit jealous that using the resource that we got right down the street. And if I'm not mistaken, um, I think that they got six hundred thousand dollars more, um, to redevelop some homes out in that area. So, that, that's a good, that's a good amount of money for a community that's, uh, one thing I, and I want to understand this clearly. When we, our, for our application, we need to have our team established. Of course, the application field out, the geographic area needs to be identified that we want to target. Uh, and then we have to have the lead organization, whether it was Hartwell, City of Statesboro, Buller County, or whatever. And then, once we get into the program, that's when we can put the plan together as to how we're going to address the areas that's within that geographic.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to understand. And then you also spoke about certification, okay? And so my question is, um, day one, uh, say that we're fortunate enough to, you know, go through that competitive process, uh, in Statesboro, Georgia, and Buller County is a part of this process, um, are we considered certified day one? Are we, uh, are, are we available to go after that additional funding day one in the program?
Once you become a, once the announcement is made, that very next year is, in 2020, you are able to, you have all of the perks through, uh, with DCA from that period and from that day. And if you go through the pilot years of the program and become an alumni community, uh, and you have not completed your housing plan. But you continue to be on a monthly basis, and there's a certification process, I can give more information to you about that, but you're called alumni, uh, oh, even before, but, uh, that DCA requires that you show that you are meeting on a monthly basis and describes everything from the minutes that you're keeping to the housing plan that you're continuing to develop. And even alumni communities continue to get these perks from DCA even after graduating from the program, uh, and then becoming this alumni status.
Okay, and the next thing that I want to understand clearly about the GIG team. The GIG team is, is locally driven.
Yes.
That's correct. So, it's, it's an independent, ah, correct, okay? And so the lead organization, whether it's the city, county, or what have you, Department of Housing, or what have you, they're the ones that will actually go out and apply for a particular funds, um, but it's that local entity that's going to maintain the certification for the, uh, for, for that, correct? Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, so when you apply for, uh, so there's a place on the, um, and I just spoke to Joe Fredwell this morning about it. Uh, and, uh, and yeah, so there is a place for you to be able to show that you are, um, a GIG community, and then they just cross-reference that with information and data, uh, to, to turn that into, uh, for those citizens to be in the field.
Right, I think that's a major, a major plus with it being a community group.
Okay.
You know, especially for us, I mean, with the Blue Mile, and, uh, we got some great organizations like Habitat for Humanity that's doing a lot of great work within the community. So, I think that's really a plus for us.
And, 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 you know, GIG program is really rooted in this idea of talking about like social capital. And like really building the bonds, building the connections between people in a particular community that address a, uh, certain issue. And oftentimes, uh, neighborhoods or communities that have, that, that find it challenging to solve, like, some of these issues, uh, lack those connections. And what we think, you know, uh, not only building those connections amongst communities, uh, but also building those connections amongst communities around the state, is, is, is a way that we hope to kind of foster that and develop that social capital. But, but yes, we are, you know, we are not the institution that's going to come in and say, hey, this is what you should do. Even facilitators, facilitators go through a training, uh, but one of the things about facilitating is that you are facilitating, right? You're not saying, you know, you need to do this, or you need to do this, or you need to, you know, we make it by facilitators, good facilitators that provide, you know, uh, ideas to kind of wrestle with. But, um, uh, uh, we are not entities that are, that are driving your initiative. We really emphasize, um, and I think the, the, the success and, and strength of the GIG program is that it does empower local leadership. And that's the goal, that's what we, we go to do.
All right, and then for our financial obligation, the only financial obligation is to agree to, uh, pay for the travel of the team.
Yes.
To the, to the retreat.
And there's, and there's other things that you don't have to put in the application, but you probably want to think about, um, you know, your monthly meetings that is going to be provided. Yeah, there's going to be, uh, you know, speakers that you may want to come in and speak to. So, things like that, not, not major, um, uh, and then it's going to be a, a major expense, but something to think about as you're moving forward with your GIG housing.
Okay, I'm trying to make sure I get all of my, my questions out. Thank you.
Yeah, one more question, really this is more a comment to Mayor Council.
Okay.
I had met with, um, there are several Blue Mile folks who met with a developer who specializes in low-income housing, um, a couple of years ago. The first question he asked me is, is Statesboro or Buller County a GIG community?
Yeah.
What's that? Because this is a learning process, we're all going through the learning curve. So, with that being said, um, he addressed that there are, I'm being ignorant, didn't know that there are certain developers that could come into a community to build. And one of the things that they go through this checklist, through the government assistance, is being a GIG community. That was a big thing. But also where things are located in terms of, it needs to be X number of miles from a daycare, X number of miles from a pharmacy, X number of miles from food sources. All of these things that I think that we all need to be aware about. So, I saw the, um, council for looking into this, because I do think it has potential. I'm not sure about this retreat thing yet, but I think it will give us the tools, but I still think we have to do the work.
Yeah, oh, yes, oh, yes.
And we have to be committed, we, you know what I mean, we have to be committed. Now, my, another question, probably back to Jermaine, is how many of these communities have grant writers that assisted in these, all these applications? Because it seems like there's money out there.
Yeah.
We're all about money, right?
Yeah.
But how many of them have grant writers who actually do not? I'd be curious to know that question.
So, the, the, the teams that have been most successful kind of have somebody that, and, and the grant writer may be somebody who works for the local program. But, uh, the teams that are, uh, successful are teams that, that are familiar with the idea of grant writing and are familiar with the CBG process and that application. Some of the smaller communities that I was talking about earlier, uh, who really lack that, that capacity, and we're thinking now about ways of how to, how to capacity some of these smaller institutions, uh, smaller municipalities. But, uh, but yeah, it, it's, it's really important to have someone, um, that is familiar with grant writing and that, and that process. Does this mean that you, and, and I will say that the facilitator, as well as the connection that you can make, will, I think, will open up and give you ideas about, you know, how to do, uh, how to apply for, maybe even someone who could, could come on board. I know that, uh, I don't, I, I, are you, relationship that you have with the Regrow Commission, um, I know they provide some type of, uh, of services as well to, along with housing systems. And this may be something that, a resource that you may be able to pull from to think about, uh, fighting some rights and, 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 as well.
I don't know if we're counting our, in the application, in fact, in the early two thousands, we did something kind of similar to this. We established a land bank, partnered with, uh, Habitat for Humanity and developed the Lynn Tenner Corp area. All those, all that whole development was done under something similar to, to this. Would that be something that we could use as a, as an example, or something we have, have done?
Well, I, I think what we're looking for most are some of the ongoing initiatives. And I think it would be, you know, be great to, to, to holler. Uh, but what we are kind of, um, grading the applications on, uh, you know, what are some of the current initiatives that they already have taking place? And, you know, something like a Blue Mile initiative, um, from my understanding, they have, have redeveloped some homes already.
In partnership, right, this one from the local foundation.
Exactly.
And Habitat for Humanity. Those have been our two big causes.
Exactly, so, so, and, and, and that, and that there is, is a very great, yeah, that's, that's a great thing to, some communities do not have that at all. And, and, and just because you don't have this, you know, doesn't mean that you, you know, you can't get into the GIG program. This is kind of what we look for, and given the, the applicants that we have and looking at, you know, judging applications in, in relation to other, of the other, uh, other communities that are interested, is kind of how we're going to, you know, make that final decision about, who is going to be in the program, who won't be in the program.
I have a question down to Jermaine.
Yes, sir.
Reps to the, Mr. Dick Washington, Georgia, Washington, Pansy, he's led the Delta Program for the, like, his own off by, uh, lake homes. We don't have trailers in city, we don't have a lot of, I guess, they, uh, lake homes on off by. So, what would the application for the owner, the, the quality of the sort of owner, is it as fun as it would be off and out?
Oh, no, so, uh...
I, I just, I want to kind of clarify, you want to know what it, what does it take for the owner to be eligible for the benefits, helping, helping improve the property?
Correct, okay. Yeah, um, so with the, not a community, that was a house. They had, now, there are funds, like the CHIP fund, for example, um, is, and that's the, um, we have the Housing Movement Program that is a DCA program, very similar to CBG, applied. Great funded competitive program. And, uh, they are, I think in Valdosta, they were looking at, uh, those homeowner, number one, identifying the area first. And, uh, I don't, I think that the, it was a income, had a cap on it, uh, if there was a certain amount of, of, the household had a certain amount of income. It, it was a low, certain threshold, you know, a lot of, um, and so it was really trying to address, um, the low-income homeownership, uh, low-income homeowners who were unable to, um, repair their home because they didn't have the income. Uh, now, I'm not, I can get back to you about the requirements for the CHIP program, uh, about, uh, whether or not that is income-based. I don't think so, I think that there is more geography-based, if you have an area that used, that had a concentration of black homes. You apply for CHIP program, and you are able to get those funds to address that issue. I think that it's, it may be up to the local initiative, whether or not it's going to be, uh, what that income cap.
I, I do have another question, I'll wait till after Council.
No, I just, if we were selected and enrolled in this program, you would be well aware of all these opportunities, which you feel so, such a community.
Yes.
And so, it's kind of to piggyback off of what Councilman Jones, Jones is, is mentioning, um, air property. A lot of times, these properties, uh, they're passed down from generation to generation, and they are in that flux state of being air property. I, I think I saw something earlier, um, that was on the PowerPoint that discusses air property.
Yes, so the Air Property Law Center, uh, did a presentation at our last, um, uh, retreat, and, and they've actually done, in the past, they've done a couple of, um, but they do work with, uh, GIG communities, and that is, uh, uh, one of the entities that, um, you know, we connect our communities with who are dealing with those issues of air property that are creating this blank, uh, in a, in a neighborhood. And what the, um, the, um, Air Property Law Center does is to kind of help work out these issues. The air property issue that you're going to be, really, really complex, and, you know, finding the people and identifying, uh, who owns it, so on and so forth. But this is, uh, uh, a, an air non-profit organization, and they provide that, they did do a presentation on that very subject, uh, air property, and how, how we can address that, what their, what they bring to the table as a resource.
Okay, and so my question now becomes, if, if we're able to be one of those applicants that, that, that makes, makes it in, we do have access to the, um, that organization?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, and, and this is something that, you know, some of these, you know, I encourage you to go ahead and build some of these connections, right? You know, the GIG program, as I mentioned, provides a, a very helpful space to be able to play and to do, uh, and then on top of that, I want to provide a space to also get centers to, accomplish the goals that you, that you have, uh, that you have set. However, is, um, you can make inroads, um, um, outside of the GIG, uh, program. But it does, as I mentioned, kind of help to build that network, um, of people, uh, of institutions. So, it's a really good place to be, a lot of communities, again, they have no idea about air property law center and what, what that has to function. And what we, what you're able to do is get, uh, some information from them and also get some information.
Are there any other questions from, um, Norbert?
I do have a question, just kind of piggyback on the question of Mr. Roy. And that is, um, if Statesboro becomes part of a GIG community, that doesn't necessarily include the possibility of the county applying later with an effort to benefit some of the rural areas or some of the smaller towns that have found themselves, they're too small to do this. But the county is a much bigger entity that could do this, uh, if they have.
Exactly, yeah, and so we have a variety of different, um, approaches. Some, uh, for example, Truap County is a freshman, freshman community this year, and, uh, Truap County is the applicant. But they're made up of LaGrange, West Point, and, um, I'm trying to think of the third, but the, 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 I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, you're right about that.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, exactly. And so, but that, so that's one approach, right? We have these three, uh, cities that are a part of the GIG team, and it's, and it's more so kind of trying to address a broader scope. Uh, we have had cities, uh, where the city had, a city within the county has applied, another city in the county has applied. And we've had situations where a city has applied, and then the county applied. So, uh, but as long as, um, uh, it is this local government, uh, entity, those are the, those who are eligible.
I would imagine you would not want a city, um, competing with one another for a year, but, but one applying after the other one is, is applied. I think would be potentially a good thing, if it accomplishes a separate, but equally important issue.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, as I mentioned, there's, there's so, there's a number of different, um, scenarios that can take place that are equally valuable. My, if I could give any advice, it would be, um, to bring as many people to the table as you can. Even if, and, and when I say identified geographic area, uh, this does not mean that, you know, the entire team has to focus on this one neighborhood, right? There may be a situation where, uh, where we want to, we know that there's a, uh, we want to target this particular neighborhood that may be closer to the central city, uh, municipality. But there's also this other smaller, um, city, or there are pockets of kind of areas out in the county that we want to address as well, too. The key is just to be, uh, to know what it is that you want to do, um, and, and as well as you can. This is not meaning that you're going to have everything figured out before you get, because you're going to be, yeah, a, a part of the GIG program then, but, um, and, and, and the thing is too, is that what we see is that communities will come in with an idea and an area that they're going to focus on. And this doesn't mean that it can't change, right? They may get in and say, well, you know what, we're just not going to be able to do what we thought we were going to be able to do starting off. But maybe we should, uh, rethink our approach, maybe we should rethink the area that we're going to focus on, either sma, uh, shrink the scale of it, or even roll it to another area. But hey, you know, we have, we have a team in place that really addresses this, this issue in, uh, in Statesboro, this area in Statesboro, but also in Brooklyn as well, too. We got, uh, a team, we feel like we can put together a part of our GIG housing team, because there's no limit with the number of people that you have on, you know? It's just thinking about the logistics of that planning effort, but, um, but yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a variety of ways that you can keep an approach.
And so where I am hearing you say it is that, once we get into the program, if we need to make adjustments to the identified geographic areas, we can do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, are there any other questions from, from the, from the audience? Are there any questions for Council? Um, I do kind of want to sum this up, uh, and again, I want to thank everybody for coming. I know everybody has a busy schedule, but you coming does let us know your dedication to our community, uh, as a whole. But the reason, a key purpose of us, of, of us being here is that, uh, the city of Statesboro does have an affordable housing problem, okay? Uh, and that is represented in the fact that housing that was initially identified as student housing, we are now having families being raised in two-bedroom apartments with three hundred units in one apartment. And what we're seeing with this high cost... Um, and what we're seeing with this high concentration of people in and around our, um, local university is that if you look at the crime map, we're seeing a lot of crime in and around those areas. And so what my hope is, is that we can address, you know, the housing matter by giving these families that's not concentrating into these areas a opportunity to move to an area that's affordable and going to, uh, uh, and going to, uh, uh, allow them to have a high quality of life that they deserve within our community. So that's what the hope is. Um, you know, I think perception is very key. Um, I, I think, and correctly if I'm wrong, achieve that Statesboro's crime rate compared to other colleges, college towns of similar size is the, is the lowest, only next to Boone, North Carolina?
Yes, Mayor, when we compared just the Sunbelt Conference, or just those versus, we, uh, we had the second safest city to Boone by a crank.
Absolutely, and you would not know that because of the Eagle Awards was coming out, uh, and you would think Statesboro was crime-rich, but we, we are a fairly safe community, but perception is everything, right? You know, if you get, if, if something bad happens to you in Statesboro, then you don't want to hear about what's going on in Detroit. You want to know about what's going on in your local community. So I think that this allows us, if, if we're able to come apart, and council says that we want to support this, it allows us to be able to, to continue that comprehensive understanding that, that we want to improve our community, uh, and, and, and embrace this economic opportunity that we've gotten before us, and by adding that affordable housing piece, it puts us in a great position to, to lead a community that's in better, that's in better shape for those that come behind us. So that's one key thing that we definitely want to do within, uh, with this, with the outcome of this conversation, so.
And this may be a, um, chiming in there, um, and another one to think about, um, affordable housing is, uh, um, you know, this is housing for your workforce as well, too, not just, uh, for those who, you know, you absolutely want to take care of those who are, uh, at the door in of economic ladder, but, uh, but we see in many small towns, many places around the United States, uh, in general, is that, um...
Just ordinary workers.
Yes, uh, uh, police officers, so on and so forth, like, your, your workforce needs housing where you're not paying more than fifty percent, you know, because we, we make some very significant trade-offs when the, the, the majority of your funds, incomes, going to, so. So thinking about affordable housing, not only, you know, thinking about the, you know, the wide array of what we mean by affordability and all of that, and all of whom that's going to accommodate, uh, like I said, not just those at the lower end, but also just regular working people.
Absolutely, gotta look out for every joke, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, if, if there's no further questions from the audience or from council, um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the, uh, work session.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, is there a second? Uh, all those have been, that's, uh, that's a favor.
Alright.
Alright, we are adjourned, and, uh, Dr. Drum, if they have any, uh, additional questions?
Sure.
We appreciate, but thank you for coming down.